In nineteen, we will start the meeting in a moment's time. Thank you. Jay Farrell, would you lead us in the pledge?
Certainly. Would everyone rise for the pledge? Ladies and gentlemen, we declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have the agenda before you. Is there a motion to either approve the agenda or to modify the agenda in some way?
Second.
Just a point of personal order, if I could, with respect to the minutes of August the 12th. I had a couple of things on the minutes to revise. Would you do that? Do you want to approve the other two items and then go back to the minutes, or how would you like to proceed? Yes, there are not that many of them. First of all, under attendance, Commissioner John Gonnitz and Michael Fiocca were absent from the last meeting on vacation or otherwise excused absence. Does that phraseology wish to be added to the minutes? Pamela Baldwin made a motion that the additional language be added. Is there a second? Seconded by John Gonnitz. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
With respect to page four of the minutes, starting at the top, we were talking about notice of public with respect to unregulated chemicals. And you have before you tonight just a slight revision. There are, there were a number of just clarifications that I felt were needed to be made of that discussion. I wasn't sure about the phraseology at the very end that said, that Manager Bruce Beck said he did not know if we sponsor these third-party sites. And I'm not certain, does anybody have a number to that? Or Brian Bruce Beck, do you remember what you?
I think, as I saw these just before the meeting, I mean, the only comment that I made at that point was with regard to third parties, that these aren't, this isn't third-party data, that the town is really kind of hard to part in creating. So I can't necessarily vouch for its veracity figure. We're hiring a third-party consultant, so obviously we deal with third-party consultants. To me, it was, I think, a little bit premature to, you know, be standing behind a third-party researcher when we haven't really had as much opportunity to work with them. And I think that's what I was getting at. And I'm not sure what that last sentence is.
Okay. Is that reflected sufficiently in the second paragraph where it says, "Manager Bruce Beck stressed that the samples from the water were done by a third-party and not the town? The town did not hire these consultants as a part of daily operation." Is that sufficient, or is that different from?
I guess. I mean, that doesn't really alter the intent, you know, and I did more or less stress that the town is in compliance and is doing what we are in fact required to do.
Right. Which is then in the next, the town is doing what it's required to do. The information coming from the third-party could have highlighted the unregulated chemicals in the town's water.
I don't know what that sentence is about.
Well, the original one was, I think some of the information coming in would be a third-party source that wants to highlight the larger issues of unregulated chemicals, which is a piece that apparently turns up in our water. It was a combination of sort of an awkward kind of thing, but I thought that the paragraph that we had here would clarify. Perhaps that's gotten too deep in the weeds. Would we like to work on that over the, work on that wording? Or does anybody have any suggestion about how we can sort of untangle that just a little bit?
By disabling the minutes or reapply them?
Okay.
I appreciate the point. I think that's really spot-on, and I appreciate Mr. Bruce Beck emphasizing that we are not currently violating the law. I don't care to undermine the research of NC State University and Duke University. And the research will be published in peer-reviewed format soon, so I don't think there's any necessity of pointing out that it's a third-party or a questioning editor, so I mean, perhaps not.
Was the third-party the new article? Is that who the third-party was?
I don't know. I mean, it's whoever's generating the data, I guess.
Because I think the agenda I came forward as a discussion based on an article that had appeared in the Health News or North Carolina Health News, was that it?
Yeah, but to me, in my opinion, this is something we were moving toward doing anyway. So to me, it's not really about that article. This is just, we're sharing information with the public. It's not a response to that article, which probably a lot of people who don't read Facebook might not even see. But to me, the third-party, my understanding would be the Harvard Assembly, Duke University, and NC State, that's what we were basing our concerns on, that data. At least, that's where my concerns come from. I do respect research at Duke and NC State and Harvard Assembly, and the fact that they all had very compelling results led me to believe that, having come from three sources, that, you know, we don't know the exact figures, but there was enough cause for concern that we needed to make a public statement about it.
I think, while I was at the last meeting, so I really won't comment on the minutes, I agree with you wholeheartedly. This was not a major response to an article that we've been working on it for a very long time. And honestly, Mayor, you don't get enough credit in the press for the job that you've been leading, because you've been really working hard on this matter. So I think that's worth noting.
Yeah, and again, I just, I don't want to stand behind someone else's research that I don't have anything to do with. That's what, that's all I was trying to get at.
I think, I understand. I think your feelings are valid, but to me, this does clearly state that we do need it. We exceed state standards. This is a national problem, and we're taking action. That's to me, that's what I get from this. I mean, I, I.
Yeah, I think that, basically, that's what we're doing informationally. And if we want to, I think we still should let the public know that, and need to know, let them know the source of that. And if we want to do labor, that's fine, but I think we need to go and let them know that this is what these individuals have found. We are definitely in compliance with all state standards, totally in compliance. But we need to also let the public be aware of what others have found, because it will seem like we're trying to cover something up. And we're not trying to cover anything.
Well, and it seems, in fact, since the minutes been closed with the idea that Commissioner Foley and Commissioner Farrell voted to make this a board directive to issue notice, somewhat gives us the direction that we needed. But do you want to make your motion to hold the minutes from?
Certainly.
From be completed until we get the summary verdict more correctly?
Take the minutes till the first meeting in September.
Yeah.
I'll be happy to modify the original motion to do the applicable.
So the original motion was to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of the minutes for July 22nd, in which we're going to continue to work on some of the wording. Those in favor, please indicate.
Mayor, would just make a clarification point. The minutes of August 12th.
August 12th, right, I'm sorry. Was there a second to your move?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed to motion carried. All right. Citizens Matters, there has no one signed up to, for public expression tonight, and so we'll then proceed to Commissioner and Manager updates. I'll start off. There are only two events this past two weeks, and they were really lovely events. On August the 13th, I was a guest of the WCHL radio program of Chatham Roundup, which was a very fun session, talking about issues here in Chatham, Kentucky. And then on the 22nd, I officiated at the opening of Charger Boulevard, the secondary entrance to the high school in the blazing heat of the day. But nonetheless, we got the road open, and hopefully, things are flowing well at the school. The other things that the Commissioners may have attended during the last two weeks, there are any reports from the EDC, or PVA, or Triangle J, or human relations?
Been gone for the last couple of weeks, and I'd like to catch up some of those reporting reports. Only that there's a little bit more information about the September 22nd activities, the Pepperfest, of course. That afternoon, also, there will be, as a part of the observations for National Drive Electric Week, there'll be electric vehicles on display in front of the old Capital Bank. And I think there may be as many as six or nine. There might be some plug-in hybrid electric vehicles, and there may also be electric vehicles. Not for riding and driving, but it is part of that national celebration.
Very good. Craig Bruce Beck, can you give us an update as far as you are concerned with regard to miscellaneous items here?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Unified Development Ordinance, you recall that in previous meetings, you discussed setting a workshop date. I think Mr. Jones has sent out an email previously asking for possible dates for a workshop. I don't know how much response we've had. Yeah, we could just tie that loop, so we can keep that moving. Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan are receiving, we're receiving a draft plan early in the week of August 26th. And then there's another open house scheduled for October 22nd. And you recall that we're also working on County Utilities Master Plan. We've had a previous presentation on that in the last month or two. Staff will be meeting with Consultant Tazin and Sawyer tomorrow regarding the dashboard, I guess, the technology that can be used, the plug-in, and cost, how different utility scenarios, as well as preferred alternatives, discussing that tomorrow morning. And we'll be reviewing those findings with the Board in September. New Town Hall, you recall, we have a work session scheduled for this Thursday, August 29th, 6:30, regarding the heat. We also are getting to work on, our high-destruction is actually working on modeling water pressure in the area, based on the conversation that we had at the previous workshop. The idea being to provide sufficient water and kind of direct where we go with some of the infrastructure design pieces associated with New Town Hall construction. Development Agreement. Staff will be meeting with Chatham Park Investors tomorrow as well regarding revisitation of that issue. I think the Board had earlier agreed through consensus that there would be a presentation, a staff presentation with the Board on September 9th during regular meeting. That's changed, letting you know. That's not the public hearing, it's required by law. That just has to be set and held sometime before the development agreement is actually formalized. Getting down into a few maybe less exciting details, or more exciting, depending on how you look at it. The generator did swing around the back of the building. You can see it, it's a picture of the pad. We now actually have the actual generator unit repaired on there. That's to replace the old generator that came with the original building. We should have that operational by this Thursday. We'll be going, losing power briefly while we connect to a temporary generator. While the temporary generator supplies us with power on Thursday, we'll be connecting to the grid the new generator. So that's, that's the idea, to keep us operational during this hurricane season. And like I said, hopefully, we don't need it. Pesticides, I mentioned at the last meeting. At the last meeting, we discontinued the use of any product contains principal ingredient in Roundup. Typically, we'll use about a gallon to a gallon and a half in certain areas. It's our intention at this point in time to go to a non-toxic treatment. I know that there is, there is some discussion pending on pesticides program. We're certainly, I have some notes on that. We're certainly able to go into some discussion on that later or in another kind of year, on. So that, that issue, I think, is a welcome one from our standpoint. I think one we're going to be well-prepared to follow through once we, once we settle on a direction. We've also had some communication, as you're aware, regarding the Traffic Circle Improvement Project. Construction on that's been delayed until 2021. You might have heard some discussion in the news about DOT resources really being restricted by, of course, cases and hurricanes, and so they've kind of hit the pause button on a few projects, and this is one of them. We are expecting the energy, the Duke Energy Infrastructure Relocations to continue in 2020. I'm also advised by DOT that Hillsborough Street, that project from Wallace to Hall Place, 15501, does expect to continue. Construction's expected to begin on that at this point. It's what I'm aware of, in the summer of 20, or spring of 2021. If that changes, we'll certainly let you know. With that, that's all I can think of at the moment. You also have, don't forget, Chatham Chamber Economic Development Briefing tomorrow morning. So if you're able to go, you are all signed up for that. I plan to be in there for a little while, anywhere away before I go to another meeting, so hopefully I'll see you there.
Start today. All right. Under Old Business, the first matter we have is the Pittsboro ABC Board appointment. Jim Knott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. Just two items. One, to give you a little quick update of where we're at in terms of the end of the year and the fact that our audit is complete, and at least verbally, we were told that it's very good. And we have not received the audit report yet, so I don't expect that to change. I'd just say, we had another extraordinary year, continued to increase revenues, and you'll be happy to know that the amount of funds available to pass on to the town of Pittsboro will increase substantially this year over last year. And as soon as the audit report is received, and we assure ourselves of all those numbers, we'll be to you with that money. The main purpose of my standing here before you today is to let you know that I have resigned as Chair of the ABC Board, effective today, and I'm recommending that Board Member Hugh Harrington take my place as Chair. And I've agreed to stay on as a Board Member to work with you and the other Board Member through the November period. And I want to say that the years that I've spent as ABC Chair have been really a fantastic experience. I've enjoyed working with all the Board Members and with this Board on building that ABC store into something I think the whole town can be proud of. And the staff that we have there at that store right now, I think, is just doing an exceptional job. And the support of this Board through the years that I've been Chair has been extraordinarily appreciated by myself. And so I wanted to pass that on. And again, recommend to you that Hugh Harrington take over as Chair, effective into business today. And we work out the transition for the next two or three months, and I think it will go very smoothly. Be happy to answer any questions or any comments.
Any questions for Jim Knott?
Jim, appreciate your service.
Thank you.
I appreciate the job you did as Chair, and appreciate the fact that you'll stick around and help smooth out any bumps along the way as we make transition.
Very good.
And with that, I make a motion to approve Hugh Harrington.
Second. Moved by Margaret Fiocca, seconded by Batwell and Foley. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you very much.
Next item is update from the Chatham Economic Development Corporation. Lisa Berg, would like us to talk about her efforts with respect to a new grocery store.
Yes. So at your July meeting, you requested that the Economic Development Corporation look into recruiting a third grocery store to Pittsboro. And I have some good news. The developers of the Northwood MUPD are currently in discussions with grocery retailers, and this project is making its way through the entitlement and development process. I'm looking over towards Jeff and his team. They are, for the record, not of approval. So we anticipate some good news from that front pretty soon. But since the request, we, our office, did a considerable amount of research in site selection requirements of grocery stores, and we've learned quite a lot. The first is that a good market analysis is everything to a grocery store's decision to locate in a community. So Pittsboro, right now, demographics are a little on the light side, but they're changing. So as we see increased rooftops, we're going to see increased opportunity for these types of developments. We also learned through both published site requirements from different grocery stores, as well as conversations with individual commercial brokers that specialize in retail development, that grocery stores can be incredibly selective beyond a market analysis. So ingress and egress with a shopping center, visibility, the amount of dedicated parking, traffic counts, linear footage of a storefront, having a lighted intersection, aesthetics, and that's not to mention the actual square footage of a vacant space. So that brings me to the available space on East Street, which is about 24,000 square feet. That space comes with some challenges, especially for modern grocery retail development. We're actively talking to different real estate brokers, including the team that's representing the building, a team that was representing a potential buyer for the building, and different brokers who have represented different clients looking at leasing the space. So with that, we're going to continue working on filling that vacant space, because I think there is quite a bit of potential there. But I'm asking this Board for some potential creativity when it comes to requests from potential users, just because it's, you know, kind of a different space. It's about 30 years old at this point. So we might need a little bit of elbow grease to get it fitting as tenants' requirements. So that's a quick update. With that, I'll entertain any questions or comments, and I'll also be happy to provide a subsequent update in October or so as we progress. Questions for Lisa?
Lisa, just want to, is the building owner, are they willing to do any improvements on it also?
I am not clear on that.
Okay.
I can find out, though.
To me, it seems like if a grocery store doesn't work out there, there may be something else that would serve this community, something that we don't currently have.
I'm thinking a really nice furniture store.
Something that could be an anchor for that shopping center to support the other businesses.
There's a lot of opportunity there.
What types of concessions were you, did you have in mind?
There was one prospective tenant, and I won't name who it was, but it was going to need some flexibility with the parking requirements and potential outdoor storage space needs. You really know what I'm referring to, but, you know, if, just depending on your willingness to get creative with amending certain things, how badly you want it filled, how quickly. There are some folks out there who are willing to take that space and do the work to get it up to their standards, but it might require a little bit of, a little bit of work.
And does that relate to our key requirements and potential outdoor storage, does that relate to grocery?
No, that was a different tenant.
Okay. I think it's groceries that we're really hoping to have returned to that space. And it's a challenge, clearly. That's kind of why I was thinking about the small independent brokers that I linked you to. And I'm curious if you were able to reach out to them, or if they were responsible at all?
Yeah, actually, of all the grocery stores, we did research. We researched every single one of them that operates in North Carolina, and a franchise grocery store would be the best bet for that particular space. I reached out to Carly Zies, an IGA franchisee, and I'm not sure if the parent company of Compare Foods is a franchise, but reached out to them as well. And one other that I am forgetting right now, but a smaller, independent retailer that operates within North Carolina. I have not heard back from any of them. But we'll continue trying, because certainly think that would be the best fit. But still look forward to, you know, a potential, I think that was the concern, is having another option within Pittsboro, and it's coming. Hopefully, but surely, it's coming.
Any further questions? Bill Foley, your next question?
Yes, I look forward to it, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Next matter on the agenda is the site plan review for Chatham Concrete. Jeff Jones will lead us in that discussion.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, we have Site Plan SP 201902 for Chatham Concrete. That is up for decision for the Board tonight. At the August Plan Board meeting, the Plan Board voted four to zero to recommend denial of the plan. The Plan Board believed that the plan presented to them lacked detail in the overall impact of the plan on the community, and the overall height exceeded the zoning ordinance at 50 foot maximum. Since then, the applicant has reworked the proposed plans that are before you tonight, and that's, those are being presented tonight for a decision. We'll talk more about those changes in just a little bit. Background on how we got to this point. A concrete facility on this property has been discussed in the community for well more than a year, with staff advising the Board and Potterstone residents that a plan was going to be submitted for review, even going as far as meeting with Potterstone residents on multiple occasions, either in town offices or at their HOA meeting. Staff provided guidance on how to approach the future potential project, even going as far as to advise that a rezoning request, if submitted to the town, could possibly stop this plan or other heavy industrial uses in the area. As it turned out, a plan was submitted in January of this year, before any action was taken on rezoning the property or other action deemed appropriate by the town. Once the application was submitted, staff had a duty to review the site plan as we would any other permitted use according to the town's zoning ordinances and policies. The applicant and the property owner have that right. Throughout the review of this project, staff held the applicant and his professional staff to the strictest interpretation of the zoning ordinance, going as far as recommending denial to the planning board of this project. As the plan progressed through the review, staff became concerned that certain items, such as the overall height of the silos in particular, and the dust collection system wasn't being shown to meet the ordinance of being injurious to adjacent properties. Staff recommended denial to the Plan Board. Additionally, one of the items most important to staff prior to the plan, in prior plans, did not have enough details that were Pittsboro-specific. We had plans that were not related to the site that was being proposed in Pittsboro. We had plans from Columbia, South Carolina, of a plant there of the overall. We had plans from Columbia, South Carolina, of a plant there of the overall, and there was little detail as to the dust collection system. The applicant has provided a Pittsboro specific plant, plant plan, including dust collection system, and limited the height of the silos to be below 50 feet. Staff's concerns from the earlier plans were addressed in the plan that's before you. The town and the residents of Potterstone can be assured that through their efforts as a community, the plan is better today than what was possibly could have been presented to the town tonight. The applicant, the opinion of the staff, has tried to mitigate the proposed use by increasing the setbacks, increasing landscaping, lowering the height of the proposed plant. The applicant has taken advice from the submitted report on the noise level of a concrete plant and is proposing to line the materials bin with sound dampening rubber. The site, if built according to the submitted plans, will have proportionally more trees and/or landscaping compared to overall size of the plant to those two existing concrete plants in town. The applicant is preserving those trees because a considerable more acreage of land was purchased than what was needed to have a concrete plant on the site. For comparison, two acre site for Chandler Concrete versus a 10 acre site for Chadon Concrete, with Chadon Concrete being a smaller plant as it relates to Chandler Concrete. With the efforts by the applicant to modify its plan to meet the strictest zoning ordinance interpretation, the applicant hearing the community concerns, and again going above the town ordinance, as staff finds that the site plan for Chadon Concrete should be approved as submitted, the staff is recommending approval of the site plan. I can answer any questions, and the applicant is here.
Questions for, uh, Jeff, from the applicant?
So just to start, if this was not required to go back before the planning board, would the changes made? That would have been helpful.
Have the soils been tested for septic?
That could be a question for the applicant. When the subdivision was done, that would normally be a process, if a minor subdivision was done, this was an exempt flat. It was over 10 acres, so staff could not require that at the time.
The reason I ask is there is a space shown to be cleared for septic.
That's correct.
And it is, apparently.
Sorry, I asked her to move that.
It's, it's close to the stream, and if there were soils that would, yeah.
Yeah.
If the soils were further to the east, then those trees wouldn't necessarily have been cleared.
In that particular area, yes.
Right. And so I would request that if soils are adequate in the eastern portion of the site, that that's where the septic is. The other thing that I noticed is clearing is shown on the north and west side of this easement.
Let's see if we got.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the clouding effect of the tree line, it's the new tree line after the clearing.
Right. And so I think your last slide, you just wanted to indicate the reason for that clearing, and that's the plant trees.
Plant, those layups.
So there'll be a thick, as opposed to the napkin.
I have a question, this regarding this sound emissions test. 1987, is that valid? How many years ago is that? 30? My math's not as good, but that's several years ago. How valid is, do we have to go back to take a test to accept these kind of results?
Yeah. As it is, the applicant did not have to provide that information to the town in order to come before you. He was doing that to try to indicate the level of sound and noise that a plant, and this study, even though it was in the 80s, could potentially generate. There's no ordinance requirement that says, you know, sound level study has to be submitted with this plan. This is a permitted use. It's not a special use permit. If it were a special use permit, that might be something that we could put in as a requirement of future concrete plants.
I had concerns about the noise issues also from reading this. I was curious to see it when I read these numbers about decibels. I wasn't sure what that sounded like to see these levels, and so I looked it up, and even the lowest numbers, which is around 90 decibels, is equivalent to heavy traffic on a highway. And anything above 85 decibels over prolonged time can actually cause hearing loss. You know, on highways, a lot of times if they're residential homes close to highways, they build walls that help break the noise level. And it seems to me only fair, I'm concerned that if you just plant more trees, how long is it going to take to get trees that would be a significant sound barrier? So my feeling is, if you consider that noise level is equal to motorcycles, heavy traffic, it's equal to all kinds of things like that. I understand that we can't require them to build such a wall, but to me, if we're dealing with the issue in the ordinance that says, it talks about, that's one of the restrictions of commission of creation of noise. And to me, I'm concerned about that noise level on a prolonged basis for people that live in Potterstone Village.
Actually, I have concerns about the noise as well as the dust. That concerns me. And I do have a question about, that's indicated in this booklet that we have received inside of Chadon Concrete LLC, indicates that they had increased acres to 10.7 acres in terms of six acres of buffer land. So are you saying that it's going to be six acres between where the plant is and the park?
No, I'm just saying the entire site that they purchased was, that's what they're saying, it's 10 acres was.
So it's not going to push it back? That's my question.
Well, they did push it back.
Did it push it back or how far down?
I mean, they could be right up to the floodline.
Right.
They, they are not, in their, their proposed plan, it's not showing that.
And how far did it go then?
The staff report indicates that the closest property line, residential property line is 190 feet, and the closest residential, from the closest residential property line is 440 feet from the nearest resident. Want to say that M2 setbacks on the side are 25 feet.
Also, I had a question about, I know that there was some indication that there were, some of the equipment could be coated with rubber on the inside to cut down on the noise levels of the rocks going into the machine. And I wondered if there'd be any kind of mechanism for maintenance on that, because it seems like they'd be, that might help in the beginning, but I wonder how long that rubber coating would last.
So if this plan is approved at some point in time in the future, this will be an enforcement issue. We will have to make sure that, one, it's built to the standards as approved, and that, you know, as time goes on, we would have to monitor the situation, monitor the site, field calls from residents if, if there are complaints, and go out and take a look. And if we deem that there's a problem, then we'd ask the operator of the plant to put new stuff in, monitor. That's, that's really the enforcement action, is enforce the ordinance or any plan that might be approved.
I have just one little question regarding this. I looked this up under the town ordinance, it's under M2 manufacturing. I'm not going to read it off, but I'm just going to read a couple of sentences in it. It says, "The purpose of this district is to permit the normal operations of almost all industries, excepting those that would be detrimental to adjoining properties. Excluded from this district are those industries which are noxious by their emissions of smoke, dust, fumes, glare, noise, and vibrations, and also industries which deal in hazardous To me, it seems like, right, that this concrete plant located right there is giving off all of these hazardous areas that we're talking about here. So it, I can't support this at all. I also, excuse me, one other thing, also in our chapter 25 in the town ordinance, it says, "The Board of Commissioners is committed to preserving the health and welfare, welfare of our citizens of the town." To me, that seems to be self-explanatory right there.
That's the utility ordinance, right?
It is.
Okay.
But I mean, we don't just, we don't just do the health and welfare for utilities, or not do health and welfare, that's for every utility or whatever it is, whatever it's combined to.
Commissioner Farrell, I appreciate your point. And Mr. Jones, I also really appreciate your diligence with this project, especially the issues that you pointed out in July, your July 2 memo. And in my understanding, the issues that you raised regarding Article 17 of the zoning ordinance, you said at that time, July 2nd, prior to the changes to the applicant's proposal, that the applicant had not proven to staff that his proposal, proposed use would not be injurious to the use and occupation or enjoyment of adjacent premises. What troubles me is that I don't, I don't know the definition of injurious, but my own subjective judgment of an expanded vintage take a buffer and maybe a relocation of the actual plant and lowering of some parts of the plant, even with rubber coating, it, it doesn't suffice in alleviating my concerns about potential injury to adjacent premises. So I can't, I can't support the proposal.
Does the board wish to hear from the developer, from the applicant?
I did have one question, I appreciate the answer. Septic situation.
Okay.
I move we disapprove of this project. Second.
Moved by John Vonn, seconded by Jay Farrell. Is there further discussion?
I believe you need to answer.
Did you want to answer Mr. Farrell's question? Please come up there.
Hi, my name's Frank Stankums. And I just want you to know, I come from a small town too. I'm not some big city boy. I come from Live Oak, Florida. That's where I was raised. Average income, $24,500. We grew up pitching melons and cropping tobacco. That's what we did. I understand everybody's concerns, but I have answers to, to the two gentlemen right here that denied it. And, you know, I can talk about whichever one you want first. I got, I got, you know, the noise, the, the dust collector. You know, I'll answer any, any one first, which if you ask me questions, I'll answer the dust on my vote.
The only question I, I had remaining was whether you knew if there was satisfactory soils for septic in the eastern portion of the.
Yeah, Jeff. Sorry.
Good evening, my name is Jeremy Thomas with J. Thomas Engineering. I'm the civilian engineer for this project. We did hire a subconsulter to review the septic situation for this project. I have a waste technologies out of APAS. They did the report for this, said the soils were satisfactory for septic, and that report was passed on to, to planning.
Did it say that the entire site was satisfactory, or just that particular location?
Yeah, just the operation in its entirety is, what we have is satisfactory.
So septic could move to the eastern side of the site and not clear that area, shown as being cleared for septic.
Where would you like to move it?
As far away from the houses as possible.
Because?
Because I'd like to preserve the trees and the buffer between the houses and the plant.
I think we can look at that to move it.
Are there further questions from Mr. Thomas or Mr. Stank?
May I answer the dust collector? I have an answer for that.
Please.
So when we were given the height restrictions, there's very few plants that are allowed to be under that 50 foot. So we went with the Conoco All-Pro 10. That, that plant no longer exists. That, that company, Conoco, was bought out by Oshkosh, which is the corporation that builds ready-mixed plants, equipment from ready-mixed trucks to road equipment, military equipment, fire trucks. I mean, Oshkosh bought them out mainly for their dust collecting system. That dust collecting system is called a Conoco PJC 300S. And if we ran the plant that our, that our business plan allows, which is about a house and a half per day, we'd fill up less than this bucket with dust. And then that's, so that's the, and then we're back that far away, I mean, you could throw up a bucket of dust, and that's what, that's what'll come out less than this, this bucket right here. And, you know, I gave you that as a visual, because, you know, it's hard to know what, what plants do. It's got eight layers of, of filters, and it collects 99.9% of the dust. And then the dust is only created when you load the silos. So when you load the silos, the dust, it'll kick in, and the air will blow through those filter systems, because as it's capturing the dust, it'll turn on, the air will turn on, and it blows the dust back into the silo. And then what is, what escapes, that is what, is what, is what the excess is. That's what everything else is captured pretty good in the, into the silos. So this dust collecting system is the state of the art, and I don't think Oshkosh, with having 16,000 employees, has any lawsuits on dust collecting. And, you know, this is the state of the art system. You know, it says Conoco on it, but it's owned by Oshkosh.
Was there some, another thing you wanted to address?
Yeah, well, the noise, plants haven't changed since the creation of it. What our plant is, is a dry batch plant. And what that does is, you have a plant, and you bring in rock, sand, cement that'll go in these silos, and fly ash that also goes in this, in these silos, it's a split silo. And what it does, and that's where the dust collectors just can come in when you handle those products. The ready-mixed trucks back up under that plant, it dumps, you know, say you got five yards going somewhere, it'll dump it, whatever those pounds of all those products, add the water. The truck actually drives off the site, and it's mixing the product as it's driving down the road. It's not a, it's not a central batch plant, it's a tri-batch plant, which means the truck is actually doing the mixing for you while it's driving down the road. The noise, I mean, the noise is the noise. The bottom line is it's 67 to 70 decibels 100 feet away. That's that test. That's the only test I could find. And, and it so happened to come off of a Conoco plant, which is this, two years, you know, the same plant that we have. That test came off this plant. That test came off this plant, which is 68 to 70 decibels. A decibel, you and I are talking at 60 decibels. Vacuum cleaner, I said this one meeting before, is 70 decibels. A lawnmower is 90 decibels. Our plant will be less than 70 decibels from where anybody is sitting. The noise, as far as the rubber mat, that's an idea I came up with, because most of that noise comes from the rock hitting the side, hitting the hopper, when you're loading it with a front-end loader. So we'll, the 70 could actually go down, because we'll put a rubber mat, three-quarter inch rubber mat, bolt it to the, to the bin, maintenance is as, maintenance as needed to negate the noise. You know, we're, we're not a big manufacturing facility creating this big dust, you know? We just, we're just a small, it's actually the small, one of the smallest plants. This 50-foot ordinance made us go to a small plant. This is a small ready-mix plant, zoned for M2, which that property is. And we've spent a lot of money putting, putting land, building the trees. I mean, I hear the, I hear the, I'm not the powder-stoner, you know? I hear them. That's why we bought a lot of land. Like Jeff said, it could be on four or five acres. We've bought, we've got over 10 acres here. That's expensive dirt. And I would, you know, I mean, we're going to create jobs, 401Ks. The septic's very small, because we'll only have maybe one or two people at most in that office. Everybody else will be just drivers. So you're talking about flushing a toilet seven times a day, maybe, on the working day? So.
Thank you, sir. Anything else you'd like?
Yeah, a few questions. You have mentioned, and I don't think, I've been to plant boy meetings several times myself, but I haven't heard anything about any kind of time opening, closing, weekend work. And you said something about the trucks, you know, mixing going down the road. I worked 11 years for Nell-Otter, one of the largest building divisions in the world. When a truck gets loaded, they do the waiting time also, that they could be sitting at that yard mixing at a high RPM, correct?
No, once it gets loaded, it'll, it'll, when it comes onto the plant, we will not be, it will not be turning. It will turn when it gets out on the road. When we get off that, when we, as we're going out of our property, that's when the truck will be turning.
I don't know. I don't agree with you on that.
It's not going to be, it's not going to be, it's not going to be turning when it comes into the plant.
It would be washed out before it came into the plant.
That's right.
That's right.
But you just said that when it comes back to the plant.
No, I mean, well, maybe I misunderstood myself then. When you're loading, and you come out from under your batch plant?
Yes.
Or you're, what if this truck, truck has to, the driver has to get out to go to the bathroom, or gets a call back to the office, he's going to leave that truck there, not running and not turning, with no RPMs?
The RPMs won't be turned up, no, sir.
They're going to turn and mix for that idle?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be an idle, it'll be an idle the whole time.
All right. One other question. If there's a plant across the road from you, and I understand you did not address them with any kind of, maybe wholesale concrete or anything, this is a big expense, that you said you were a concrete finisher, and you want to get into the business of batch drivers, trucks, and all like that, and you said you're mostly going to do 50 yards a day?
That's our, that's our plan. Why not?
I'm asking you.
Yes, sir. I wouldn't have it in there. A house and a half is about 70 yards a day. That's our best, that's my business plan.
And you're going to spend all this money just to do 70 yards a day?
It'll, it will break even at 70 yards, yes, sir.
Any other questions for Frank Stankos? Thank you, sir. There's a question on the floor. Is there further discussion or further questions?
I just want to say that I would welcome this, this plant to the town, but not in this location. But we'd like to see you come here, but not so close to residents, residential community like this.
Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Do you think the motion was a motion to deny?
And I believe that Mr. Bessick asked for clarification. So the motion is to disapprove the proposal based on Article 17 of our zoning ordinance, and we're not being convinced that the project will not be injurious to the use and occupation of adjacent property premises.
All right. You've heard the motion for denial based on those criteria. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The motion carries 4 to 1. Thank you.
So the next item, we can just skip that.
All right. The next item, which was the annexation, it will be delivered. Next, we have a report by CDM Smith with respect to water supply, treatment, expansion. Let me take a little pause here while people wish to depart.
I will turn it over to CDM Smith pretty quickly, but we have the town's water supply plan has been something CDM Smith has been working on for the last several months, and they are here to share an update on the work and also help us with moving forward with expanding our water supply.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Nurse for having us today. As Elizabeth said, you've got it, Brian. As Elizabeth said, we're here to give an update on the work since, so this is the third time we've, we've presented to this board in this calendar year, not fiscal year, but 2019. And so we have been working on a water supply planning study, which looks out 40 years into the future, and says, where's the water going to come from for the town? How are we going to, the water supplies that are available, what are the pros and cons of accessing those in various order, say, at different costs, different pros and cons? And so we've looked at that. And then as a subset of this, we've also taken a look at the potential need for advanced treatment to deal with emerging contaminants. So we're going to give an update on this tonight. Going to go a little bit quick through some of the data. This presentation will not be data-heavy, it's going to be more, you know, 30,000-foot conclusions and talking through those and recommending some next steps. So this is our meeting outline. Need to move to the side here. So the meeting outline, we'll talk about an update from our April presentation. The April presentation to this board ended with recommendations. So that's where we'll start today, so it's kind of all in context. We'll talk about the emerging contaminants, because that's the main recommendation we have tonight. And then Bill will talk about the completion of the water supply study, which really looks at, do you have enough water? Not so much the quality. Do you have enough water? And when you, when are projects needed to expand your water plan or other sources of water, so that you stay ahead of the demand curve for water demand in the town? So, starting where we left off in April, this is not word-for-word, but this is mostly copied from the next steps slide from the end of that presentation. And so we left you with saying that there were some key decisions that needed to be made to chart a path forward on long-range water supply for the town. Dealing with the issue of emerging contaminants, we talked about the need to define what the town's treatment goals are. And recognized in, both in April, and I'll say it again, that's a very hard question to answer. These are unregulated contaminants, the town is in compliance, and that should be said probably often tonight. The town is in compliance with all state and federal regulations. However, there's concern among the citizens and the town's leadership about these unregulated contaminants. So my only point of saying that define treatment goals is to say, whether it's tonight or in the future, any additional definition that the town's leadership can give us to the overall treatment goals helps us to align our recommendations. But we understand that's a very hard question to answer. Secondly, under the key decisions, we, in April, we said, well, we need to finish the water supply and treatment study, that 40-year long-range plan. And so we've done that, and a draft is available. Have the leadership seen that draft? Okay, so the draft is available, and we're receiving comments from town staff, and welcome that from anyone who has comments. And last, to chart a path forward, we need to select an advanced treatment technology. And we'll talk about, we'll recap that tonight. There are four technologies that are kind of on the table for consideration. And going down to my next bullet, to select one of those four technologies, and this is, this is something we've done for multiple utilities in North Carolina, recommending a screening-level pilot. Now, pilot is a small miniature version of what you do in the future, and you are running it to get real data on Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh's actual water. Water, you know, water chemistry varies significantly from town to town and region to region. Water is the ultimate solvent. So the chemistry of it, I can't, it would be not recommended to rely on Wilmington's data for yourself. It's, for the amount of money that you would be spending on the overall project, you know, it's kind of, it may feel like a lot of money, but it's really a drop in the bucket to verify that we're taking the right approach. You know, so we recommend that, and we'll go into that a little bit more. Going beyond the pilot study, talking with staff, they've recommended that we start a discussion of how the project would be funded. So there are low-interest loan options. I've noted some here. USDA provides low-interest loans for water infrastructure. SRF stands for State Revolving Fund Loans. That is money that's from multiple different pots, some from the EPA, from, some from state agencies. It's administered by DEQ, and the current rate on that, I believe, is 1.9% interest. So it gives you an idea. They're trying to loan money for projects at a very low interest rate. And then WIPPA is a federal program by the EPA, and it's been around for two years, and Congress appropriates that money, and it's for, for water infrastructure projects. So those are some examples, and something that should be looked up, looked at in the near term is, is once the project is defined, you kind of need to work on how would it be funded. And then last step, we're going to talk about the picture of last steps. Once you move past all that, it's moving into design and then construction. Okay, so emerging contaminants, and we'll get to the capacity, Bill will get to the capacity in a minute. This is really the only data slide that I have in this section. And this is just to reiterate that there are some, what we've termed in the report, target contaminants. And that's just a way of saying, these are the ones we're focused on. We're focused on trying to get these out, and they're guiding our evaluation. So in the first column, you have the source, source water that's being evaluated, and the first column says Hall River at Bynum. So that's pretty close to the intake of the water plant, of Pittsburgh's water plant. So representative of the quality of water near that intake. And at that location, PFOS and PFOA, which are not regulated, but EPA has issued a recommendation that you not exceed 70 in the unit shown here, parts per trillion. And so the, this is not treated water, this is water in the river, but they recommend that treated water not exceed 70, and so water coming into the plant on some days needs to remove some amount of PFOS and PFOA, as shown here. Total PFOS range in the samples that we looked at ranged from 18 parts per trillion up to 1,500 parts per trillion. Again, these aren't regulated, but that's one of the big concerns that, that has led to this study. Bromide, I know you've heard a lot about that. Bromide is a chemical that leads to forming problematic chemicals. So bromiform and other brominated species can be formed, and so that's why, as water treatment professionals, we, we keep an eye out for bromide and don't, don't want to see it in the source water. If we do, we want to address it with advanced treatment. And then lastly, 1-4-doxane, near the intake for the, for the Pittsburgh plant, has had samples with a median of 7 and a maximum amount of 66 micrograms per liter. And those are, those are levels that should be addressed. You certainly want treatment to address those. The other two rows, all measuring the same compounds, one is, the middle one is at Jordan Lake, and it shows that the levels still exist for all of these contaminants, still at, at levels that warrant observation and, you know, that possibly treatments that would be closer to the Cary Apex Water Plant, but they're diluted. The lake dilutes the water some, right? And then the last line, and I think this is important for our discussion tonight, because there's been discussion about interconnection with Sanford. Sanford takes water off the Cape Fear River, just downstream of the dam, the Jordan Lake Dam. And so these are some samples that were taken in that area. And again, none of this data is from CDM Smith. We've been collecting data from many agencies that have been sourcing this data, and we've been compiling it and, you know, attempting to provide an interpretation for you. Any questions on this data?
Does that make sense that the, I think I'm reading this, the PFOS?
PFOS.
PFAS?
PFOS. PFOS and PFOA in the first column.
Yeah, yeah. So is the first number a PFOS?
No, they're combined. These are regulated as the sum total of the two.
Those are showing higher, like, what's the first number, average or level?
Just a range. The data sets were, you know, varied in how they displayed the data. So we tried to come up with summary ways of displaying it, but, you know, we're showing median and maximum, the dioxin, dioxane, because that's how it was reported, and the data was just reported in a way that we could show a range. The lowest measurement is 15, the highest was 483.
Yeah, so it's interesting that Ford and Lake, for those two categories, had a higher low number.
Yes, so 15. These, these chemicals are present, so one of the big takeaways is that they're not just present in the hall, they're present in Jordan Lake, and they're present downstream of Jordan Lake where Sanford takes water. That's one of the big takeaways from this. You know, I think the media, the media sources that have written articles recently have not said that. And, but Pittsburgh's not the only town in the state dealing with this, and what Pittsburgh's doing is addressing it head-on. And so, you know, that's, I think that's more notable than, than the PFAS itself, because many, many towns are seeing it in the water.
You had asked, I mean, you'd stated that the data was not collected by CDM Smith, but from other sources. So what other sources did you use?
I'll let Bill deal that one.
Yeah, they're listed in the report, it's too much to put on the slide, but it's mostly the state and Detlef Knopf, NC State, who showed new data, and Hall River Assembly. The same people y'all have seen data from in the past, but we have it listed as a footnote in the report.
Okay. And I think that Duke University has reported there have been some observations of non-detective, none, zero.
Yeah, we didn't have that in our data set, but there's a lot of data out there.
Yeah.
Certainly. That's why the Y, right, you know, 18 to 15.
Yes. And another thing, I, I think, Commissioner Fioke, possible explanation for the higher level in the lake, maybe that, that 15 was grabbed from a flowing stream, whereas, once it enters the body, large body of the lake, it becomes a dilution of somewhat homogenous levels. And so those higher levels are bringing up the bottom. That's, yes, but indeed, we do know that the river is a stream and the reservoir is reservoir, so there'll be some amount of mixing and. Right, that's one of the dilution that seemed to increase the figure. And it does for the higher number, clearly. Yeah.
Yeah, they weren't all sampled at the same time, and, you know, there's, there's many factors outside the control of, of these samples.
Rain conditions.
Right. I wouldn't consider. Right, I wouldn't consider these ranges definitive as a max and a low, they're just observations. So summary of what the solution could entail. There are four technologies that we use for these target contaminants. So we talked about 1-4-doxane, PFAS, and brominated species as the areas of concern. So ion exchange generally includes pressurized vessels that are full of tiny beads, and those beads exchange, nevermind, we don't even get to the, they treat the water, and they treat a narrow spectrum of contaminants, but they treat them very well. In comparison, the granular activated carbon treats a very wide, similar to the ion exchange, but it treats a very wide spectrum. However, both of these are adsorbing the chemicals onto the media, and they get full, they eventually exhaust. And so you, you will fill these vessels up with media, they will run for some amount of time, and then that media will need to be exchanged. And that's where a lot of the cost comes from, is how often am I changing or regenerating this media? Low-pressure reverse osmosis, low-pressure generally implies we're running it at pressures that we're not aimed at removing salt, like you would for saltwater. So desalinization is high-pressure reverse osmosis, takes a lot more energy, a lot more of the water is wasted. If you're in the range of low-pressure reverse osmosis, approximately 85 to 90% of the water that goes in is going to come out clean. You're not wasting very much of the water in the process. And then lastly, ultraviolet advanced oxidation process. This is high-energy UV lamps. The water is run over those UV lamps, and that causes chemical breakdown of some chemicals. In this case, we are, would be using it for the 1-4-doxane. 1-4-doxane would not be removed by ion exchange or granular activated carbon, so it's, in most scenarios that we looked at, UV, UV is either a definite need or a maybe that needs to be confirmed in the pilot test.
And UV is the final step?
Yes.
Could be.
Yes, usually, and unlike the GAC, which is attracting a broad range of chemicals, the UV is only going to affect a couple. Like 1-4-doxane is one that it works well on. Okay, so this is, these are the costs, and these are budgetary costs, and they're intended to be inclusive of the entire project cost, starting at the, let me explain first. We're showing 2 million gallons a day, so NGV stands for million gallons a day of treatment. So if you were installing these, these systems for 2 NGV, 4 NGV, or 6 NGV, these are the costs that we're suggesting carry as a budget. I've highlighted two of these options in red. These are using the acronyms from the slide prior. So IX is ion exchange, GAC is granular activated carbon, and UVAOP is ultraviolet advanced The second row and the fourth row, the ion exchange, GAC, and UV is what we would recommend you would compare to the, to the low-pressure RO. These are going to be your more effective options. That's why I've highlighted them in red. If you're looking for a greater amount of removal, we are, on a desktop level, expecting those two options to do the best. Exactly how well they do would need to be determined through testing. So as you can see, and we're going to talk later about how the plant needs to be expanded, the plant needs to be expanded to at least 4 NGV. And there's some cost savings if you look out, you know, another five years into the future beyond that, there is, just cost savings by doing it all at once, by going all the way to 6 NGV. However, there's, it's additional costs, right? And so that may not be debt that the town was to take on initially. So Bill will talk about that.
Can I ask a question? In the report, it makes mention of, probably don't have enough room to go beyond 6 NGV at the existing facility?
Yes.
And one of the questions I had was, does that mean including all of this treatment on campus?
Yeah, we're going to pack, we were planning on packing it in like sardines. The one, the one that could cause a little bit of a space constraint is the RO. But I'll say it's tight, but we believe we can, we can get it in. As we move farther into preliminary engineering, if it came out that we're going to need some additional footprint, we'd come back to you. But this time, we don't have any indication that that's necessary.
And I appreciate you highlighting those two in red. And I think those are the, that correlates to your chart that we received, and, you know, I got a black and white version, so maybe it's red in this version as well. But both of those, you say, are excellent, are removing all the contaminants.
That's right. And so for the RO, the reverse osmosis, it's going to reject it consistently unless a membrane's damaged. You're going to consistently, day in and day out, reject at a similar, a similar percent rejection. Let's say it's 90% or 95% rejection. Temperature is, temperature of the water will make it vary a little bit, but generally it stays in the same range of rejection of the chemicals. However, ion exchange, GAC, and UVAOP, as I mentioned previously, gets to a point of exhaustion. And so you want to design it, generally, we do two vessels in series and monitor them. And as one is getting close to exhaustion, we don't refill them both at the same time, so that you don't, you're not relying on one vessel. You could get a slug of contaminant coming down the river, comes into the plant, and could quickly exhaust one of those vessels. So we recommend they're in series as a way to protect, since they can be exhausted. If that makes sense.
And the RO has a waste of what we call a byproduct, I guess, waste of water, 10%?
We call it, we call it concentrate. That's right. That 10% that you're not sending to customers.
That's yet another cost to get rid of that, either by putting it back in the river or some other method.
That's correct. So one of our later recommendations is that if RO is a highly preferred option, then we recommend one of the next steps being a, an evaluation of your alternatives to deal with that concentrate as the next step, because that, that can be a showstopper if you can't, if you don't have a permissible and acceptable place to, to send that concentrate.
Does the other red option have the same concentrate issue?
It does not, it does have a waste. The waste is solid in form. So the activated carbon gets to an exhaustion point, and generally, it is taken to what we call regenerated, is taken to a special furnace facility, and it's fired again at, Bill would know, 1,500 degrees, something like that.
Right. You can either incinerate or put in a hazardous waste blanket. And that applies to ion exchange and GAC, after treatment of PFAS.
So my understanding is ion exchange cannot be regenerated with PFAS? It has to be disposed of?
Correct. And currently, if you have high concentrations of PFAS, you dispose it.
So there's waste streams no matter what. We're removing something we don't want in the water, and then now we're holding it. We got to do something with it.
I think we're already applying activated carbon.
Powdered.
Powdered injections. Okay. So this would be a different setup.
The activated carbon you're putting in is settling out with the mud that's settled out of the water. So it's leaving, it leaves the plant in your solids. The solids that are disposed of from the plant contain that powder.
Sludge.
The sludge from the plant that's disposed of contains the powdered activated carbon that you're currently dosing.
We're already kind of in a range that where we're disposing some material based on the treatment.
Correct.
As a byproduct.
Right, so the GAC option would be most similar to what you're currently doing.
Okay.
That's correct.
So if you use that option, and you became sludge, and you applied it to farms near the Hall River, would you not be reactiv, refassing that assumption?
Recycling it? That's a good question.
Because there is, there is some suspicion that agricultural sludge does contribute, although, to these high numbers, although we have always thought that they were more industrial-based, and, but, but that is yet to be determined. Is that correct?
It is, but I'll point out that adding powdered activated carbon like you're currently doing is kind of a stopgap measure. It's a, it's a way to address it right now in the interim. As you move to, if you chose the second option, and you went to a GAC and ion exchange treatment, you wouldn't need to dose the powdered carbon, so it would no longer be in your sludge. It would just be in these vessels, and then we would take it when it's exhausted. Contractor would come and pick it up out of the vessels, provide you with new activated carbon, and they would handle disposal.
So when it's burned, are these chemicals released into the atmosphere? I mean, are they destroyed, or are they just released into air, you know, does it protect air quality?
I believe that is beyond the knowledge of science right now, but I will give Dr. Bill a chance to answer that.
No, that is a concern, but there's a feature, as all of this, feature regulatory concern that the activated carbon vendors have to deal with. They have to do, permit their incineration facility and all that to meet requirements. That's why they're always having to upgrade these facilities as air regulations catch up, just like water regulations need to catch up. So yeah, that's a concern.
Any other questions? So the range of cost for the advanced treatment that we're ultimately recommending at this time is ranging from 15 to 21, or 18 to 27, depending on whether you're taking a plant to 4 or 6 NGV. Now, I want to, because of the way the data was accessible, we had to separate the cost of advanced treatment from capacity expansion of a plant. We, you know, we could have combined them. The reason is because there's multiple options, and we're pulling the data from those options from multiple places. That, it's not meant to be confusing. There's a range, you have to combine both advanced treatment cost and capacity expansion. So in summary, all water supply, as we approached this long-range water supply plan and the, looking at, looking at advanced treatment, we came to the conclusion that all water supplies would require advanced treatment to provide the same level of water quality. So whether it's coming from Sanford interconnect, whether it's coming from a future Jordan Lake Partners water plant, which is one of the options, or whether it's coming from the Hall River in your current plant, all three options, as you saw in the data, all three options run the risk of chemicals coming into the water and need advanced treatment. We recommend screening level pilot testing as the next step, so that one of these, so that we can confidently recommend which is the best alternative for Pittsburgh. With regard to expansion, Bill will get into this, time is running short on getting an expansion, and so fast-track implementation of a full-scale fix is an option, and we can provide more information on that. And lastly, we recommend pursuing your options, looking into your options for finding funding sources, because we know this is a big number. So I believe that's the end of, oh, I'm sorry, one more slide for me. So we wanted to stop, before we go into the capacity discussion, how many NGV do you need now, when? Wanted to stop and ask the board if you are at a place where you could approve, and I'll read this statement, we're asking the board to approve, Pittsburgh staff to initiate these recommended steps with CDM Smith, including the following tests. A pilot testing program for advanced treatment options. Following that would be wrapped up with a comparison of lifecycle costs for all the options. So you would see not just the construction cost, but how much you're spending over a 20-year operation life. And wrapping that up with documenting final recommendations. We also are recommending proceeding, you know, right away with funding applications. Non-specific here, because I'm digging into that, because it needs to be done on what's the right program. But evaluating that and talking with those agencies about the availability of funds. And then lastly, if RO is a preferred option, which we're, we're not pushing one way or the other, but, you know, we've done RO in the state of North Carolina and recognize that the permitting hurdles for that are more significant. And so we would recommend a alternatives of analysis be started right away to determine if an acceptable concentrate disposal is possible, so we can decide whether to continue going with RO or, or just stop talking about RO. So that, this is what, before we go to the rest of the slides, the question is whether the board is ready to take on this request. This was prepared in coordination with staff.
And the cost of that step would be what?
So we, we worked in a hurry to get this presentation together, and we weren't able to put cost or work with the town staff on the exact scope of this. So this is broad strokes. So we would probably recommend, and it depends on. Come back with an exact scope and exact price, but not necessarily another presentation.
I'm a little embarrassed that I have not been able to get through the report as carefully as I hoped to have. And I am also very curious about potential alternative sources. And I'm on figure 4-1 of the report, and looking at potential interconnections. There's a checkerboard line from Sanford to Pittsburgh, and we see the.
Did you say 4-1 or 4-2?
4-1 map. And we see the distribution system for Chatham County, and of course, town system. And I, again, I apologize that I've not gotten through the text, but maybe you discussed it there, but I'm curious to learn more about what, what the potential is for near-term, medium-term collaboration with the county.
Yeah, you talked about all that, you said Sanford, right?
County.
The county, okay.
I see the line to Sanford, but.
Yeah. The county's, the connection is not currently usable. It wouldn't take a lot of effort to make that a usable interconnect, but the availability of.
Significant.
The availability of a significant amount of water from Chatham is unlikely. So we had recommended it be, to be fixed and be kept as an emergency interconnect, but it would not get you very far into the future. Could be used if, let's say hypothetically, we move forward with advancing the plant to 4 NGV, and, and two years in, water demand spikes, and we need to, we need to get another 200,000 gallons a day. It would be recommended for something of that nature, but not, and I do, we do recommend that you restore that connection and maintain it, but it, it did not seem to us that it would supply the quantity to be a significant dent in your water demand.
You're talking about the 4-inch connection, correct?
4-inch.
Right, so 4-inch pipe just cannot, and it could be upsized, but it could not provide a significant amount of flow.
Are there other possible county sources to sell the fact that they made the existing connection? I think this is what we're talking about.
Yeah. So, yeah, I just, I'm just looking at the map, and without any data, I'm looking at a very long line to Sanford, but I'm looking at smaller gaps between our system and Chatham County system. And I'd very much like to hear a report on that. And I don't mean to put your staff on the spot right now, but.
That information will be something we would need to get more on and break the.
Definitely get the report.
We'll be doing it at county tomorrow to talk later about collaboration, interactions and things like that. But with the state of this, we have some of the broad strokes and what is considered that there, we're going, just because of the time, you know, we're going to keep this wrapped up and what that interaction is available.
Yes. I mean, it seems like, like, what, eight miles to Sanford would be a significant capital project.
14.
14, okay. And not that it wouldn't be a significant capital project to go under the Hall River and connect to Chatham County system, but maybe we could consider going under the river and connecting the Hall Rivers to Chatham County system in addition to utilizing the 4-inch line. four inch line. We're going to cross another 17 creeks, I think it is, between here and Sanford, is our recall?
One thing I'll throw in there is, based on our analysis, we weren't recommending the Sanford interconnect. It's the most expensive option, has the highest environmental impact. There are a list of reasons why it's not the best option, and it's in a later slide, but interconnect with Chatham, I think is a good idea. And a lot of our analysis that's after this is about the order you do it in. You know, most of your water supply sources in the next 40 years need to be tapped in some way. It's just, what is the best order, most strategic order for the town?
Makes sense. And I suspect Mayor Perry, there may be some political uncertainties remaining with the Jordan Lake partnership, or maybe we might also spend some time getting an update.
I think we need to catch up on where that is. Alyssa, have you been?
I've been attending the...
Ten minutes.
Participated in the Western intake discussion, so I can probably...
And Western intake is a subset of Jordan Lake.
That's correct, and it's now called the Triangle Water Supply Partnership.
The Triangle Water...
No longer called it.
Can I agree with that?
Oh, you started it right. I'm okay.
Another feature of your analysis indicate, or made mention of the town's autonomy in pursuing this water, and that going with Sanford, going with Western intake, even those contributed to lack of control of the town's resources.
Yes, particularly with, I think more particularly with the Sanford one, I think that was pointing out. The Triangle Partners, so the town owns an allocation, has authorization to take water out of Jordan Lake, and you'll need that to meet your long-term demands. I wonder if we should do, we can table this until the end and revisit it and address these capacity questions. Would that be...
I think we're kind of confusing, they're great questions, but I think we're kind of confusing the two purpose statements.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So part of this discussion was just to discuss that we need to make some decisions about what to do next with the emerging contaminants component, and we make decisions on the rest, and these are some of the specific decision forces that are needed. So we can talk about the capacity part, and then we come back to Bill, if that helps or if we finish this discussion.
Well, the clarity, clarification that I think you're offering to me is when I read the report, I thought it said we're going to test all of these strategies at once. Is that what we're doing?
Yes, we're going to test, so it's a screening level pilot, and so we're just trying to get enough data to be able to determine how effective it is. So for the RO, we can test that pretty quick. The UV, we can test that pretty quick, because it doesn't, we're not running it for a long, long time. For the GAC and ion exchange, one of the important things we're looking for is when do the contaminants start to break through the media? In other words, you've exhausted that activated carbon, and what's coming in starts to be what's going out. Or usually, it comes out higher, once it's exhausted, which we try to avoid. So we have to run that for several months. We have to run water through it for several months in order to determine how long it will last, which, if it lasts two months, it's going to be a very high, the GAC option will be very expensive. It lasts six to nine months, it would possibly be the most affordable option. So it's, there's a, that breakthrough curve is one of the more important pieces of information in order to inform the town on how much it would cost.
So if I may riff on my general understanding of how those pilot tests would proceed. You set up fairly large scale, larger than laboratory scale mock-up of what the water treatment system would be. You then run specific waters through, either from our Hall River intake, or we chose, we could test the Jordan Lake samples perhaps, or maybe bring a truck up from Sanford. We run those water samples through, and we're pulling samples periodically through that output, and then sending those samples to the lab and seeing how the contaminants, the pollutants increase as the absorbent media fills up.
All that's right, except for one thing, and I think I understand your question more, Commissioner. We're not recommending that you pilot at all three sources. We're recommending that you simply set up a pilot at the water plant and look at its ability to treat Hall River water. And so it would be, we are proposing, you know, in these broad brushstrokes of pilot testing, we need to work with staff to determine, are we testing three of the four, four of the four, but generally working with staff to develop the scope for testing is out.
Plus, perhaps we do two of the four.
But to give you some comfort level, the one we're recommending is your current supply. We'd be testing your filtered water through the GAC, IX, and RO. We've already done this exact test with Jordan Lake water, which, as you'll see later, is your recommended second alternative supply. So you are having two supplies, the data, when it's all said and done, it's just the two supplies you will have data for would be Hall River, your plant, and Jordan Lake, as we've already done this exact test for Caryetan. And we've done way downstream, as Reed mentioned, Wilmington, so you would have some bracket of that.
Just higher acidity in the water. Nothing else, is that right?
Certainly, the Hall River is very different from Jordan Lake, hence we feel you better to have reasonable cost estimates, reasonably accurate cost estimates, you better test the Hall River to know how it differs from Jordan Lake.
So we won't have to pay for the Jordan Lake pilot test, because you've already done that for Caryetan, right?
That's basically true, yes. Good point.
And I've asked this before, and I just keep hoping I hear a different answer, but we still don't have a real-time technology for detecting these dams, is that correct?
That is correct.
So we can't adjust our strategies on the fly?
Yes, it's very expensive to test for these, as you guys probably heard from Detlef and the others, when they come, Hall River is simply when they come asking you for funding for testing.
It's also, you know, like you're saying, it takes two weeks to get the test back. So, you know, if you're treating water and you're saying, well, I want to see how I'm doing, you're not going to get the feedback until two weeks later.
Wow.
So it's, you know, it takes a week to do the test, and by the time you go through the QA QC at the lab and all that, even if you pay double for the sample, you know, I think, I think it's more like three weeks, and you pay double to get it in two weeks. It's, it's not a quick test, and there's...
How quick there are you getting results back?
It's pretty consistent with what Mr. Reed is saying, a two-week turnaround time, average.
And we're sampling how often?
We're, we was sampling, doing composite samples every day. Every two hours that the water plant's running, we're doing a measured sample, and we compile it in a jar, it's like a one-week average of what it was averaging for that week, but we had been asked to halt that for the moment. I think NC State's been doing some of our testing for us, and they had, they're wanting to work on some of the laboratory equipment, and I think they're getting, they're having a lot of samples come in, I think it is overwhelmed right now with this topic.
Thank you.
And Adam, those are, those are processed for free, right, or reduced costs?
NC State is free. We have done a minimal private lab, but it's very expensive. And, you know, obviously, regulatory is what I need my money for right now.
Well, and for those who are new to this discussion, that's Adam Pickett, who's the supervisor of our water plant, and who has moved our water plant to a point where we have numerous awards for the work that he has done over the last few years. So, thank you, Adam.
So should we, back to this question, so we don't, what we could do is just table this and go into the capacity, if it sounds like that may be the desired approach.
Well, I think in all capacity scenarios, Hall River remains as a water supply, so I think we need to...
In order to have a cost for YouTube, that are, we've got to be able to identify those components are different from even if we need to send to get that, step down and call back to you, see if you can, but that's really what we wanted to make sure we wanted to proceed with that.
I guess what baffles me just a little bit is, is that there's a limited expansion of the current wastewater treatment plant because of the age of the plant and because of the lack of space for the plant. Section, the alternative number two, which is to construct a new wastewater plant on the Hall River, ends up bringing us back to the very same situation we've got right now, which is, we still have those contaminants and still the same volume, and it hasn't really done anything for us, except it's, we've built a plant downstream that might last a little bit longer and might have greater capacity, but we still have the problems of the emerging contaminant. And then we've got the third alternative of the Jordan Lake Western intake, which I'm gathering you have greatest favor for, and because you certainly don't for the Sanford line, I register an interest that Sanford is not currently doing any treatment for PFOS, PFOA, one for dioxine, or anything else, and that they could very well be shipping water back up to us in those mystical pipes that hopefully, you know, that don't exist now, that could be even more contaminated than the water we currently have.
Yes, correct. You know, if you wanted to move forward with the Sanford option, we would recommend that you negotiate they put advanced treatment at their plant, but ultimately, as the wholesale purchaser, you'll pay for it in the rate. You know, they'll recover the capital they spent on that, so it's, it's the most expensive option.
We just finished negotiating the wastewater treatment contract, and so we know what another jurisdiction does to you when you're either shipping to or from.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think we've got the information that you would like us to continue to move forward, getting the information, the contract information back to you guys, the cost, and the specific issues we'll walk into capacity side, because I think this next part is the function that we need to make sure we know where we're headed to next, with the emerging contaminants of the planet, any of our water.
I have some remaining curiosity about the applicability of the information we'll gain from a pilot scale test. How reasonable is it to conclude that the data we would gather from a test of our Hall River intake, how applicable would that be to the waters from a Triangle Water Supply Partnership or a Western Intake Partnership?
Well, yeah, the Triangle Intake Partnership, that would come from Jordan Lake, so estimating that quality, you could use the data we have from testing for Caryetan, you know, that's open public record report that's out there, and we have that available for that option.
Yeah. Plus, Zach, Mayor Perry and I were just recently speaking with a researcher from Dick University, she was leading with me with the understanding that there is a very strong correlation between the data she's observing from the length of the Hall River and its relative dilution in Jordan Lake. So we know it's the same contaminants. Did she refer to fingerprint? The fact, the series of ornate compounds are the same in lower concentrations because of the dilution effect. So we have some confidence that we're not seeing these contaminants coming from Durham, Chapel Hill, or from Wake County. So...
That's our understanding too, is that the term I've used for that is profile, the profile of the contaminants is the same, although its quantity may go up and down. It's generally the end of the same compound.
Mayor, can I get a little clarification? Adam, maybe, you said that we did not have room for addition, and a couple meetings ago, I understood that we had room for addition or anything over there.
Yes, there's room to go, definitely to six MGD, it gets pretty tight after that.
Okay, okay.
Agree on that.
Yeah.
So if you got your shoe worn out, can you do eight?
We have not tried that, it may be feasible.
Let's do eight, so that's enough.
On average day, it's a little tricky to rate. The water plant itself is rated for maximum day, whereas the sources of supply are rated by average day, and the difference is a factor of about 1.5. So roughly speaking, you could pull eight MGD all the time out of the Hall, and you could have a water plant up to about 12 MGD, 1.5 times a.
So in the winter, you might be taking six out of the river, in the summer, you might be taking 12 out, max day versus low flow day.
That's how it kind of plays out. It's a little complicated by that.
I was a little, I was struggling with what max day was, it seemed like it was one day you could pull this much out.
Maximum day is just the grading that's applied for the high, your highest day of demand in your system. That's why water plants have to be sized for max day, because they have to keep the system meeting the demand. The reason supplies are by average day is because, like Jordan Lake, it's a big supply, you know, hence the ratings, and this all by the regulatory authorities. The regulatory authorities are the ones that say, that water plant is rated on max day, your supply, Jordan Lake or Hall River, is rated on average day. It's just a way the regulators do that.
Okay. Yeah, I read that it said max day in a year, and I meant, I translated that to be only one day you could do this.
That's not really the way it plays out. It's just a regulatory rating thing, the way they'll rate the water plant.
Okay. I think, did we finish on this? Okay. Well, I'm going to give it to...
Total confusion.
We need to, I think the staff, we really understand we need more data, and I think the staff and our consultants have made notes as to which questions are still on, and I have confidence I will bring us back what we need to make the decisions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about the... Yep.
See if you want to mark up on them later.
A copy of all the slides were presented.
Oh, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Okay, so Reed covered emerging contaminants, which I do have key interest if we understand it, hence that was first. I'm going to talk about water demand, how much flow the customers need. So no matter what you decide to do as far as emerging contaminants, you got to get the water to the customers, you know, or your system will drop low 20 PSI, and that's a violation, you know, so it's just meeting water demand. More basic engineering is what I get to go from. All right, so your sources of water, and this gets into that average day business, I was glad you asked the question very timely. Hall River at eight MGD on average day, so that could support about 12 MGD roughly of water plant. Jordan Lake, there, it was a large, the whole lake in Cape Verde is kind of allocated, if you will, by the state, and through that process, you guys were granted six MGD allocation average day, so that will support about nine MGD of maximum day capacity. The Sanford interconnect that both the county is looking at and we were looking at is about a 24-inch pipe. I think, understand they're also looking at a larger pipe option that might be shared with others, but if the pipe is dedicated for you guys, it would be about a 24-inch pipe, 14 or 15 miles long, depending on where you connect. pipe, 14 or 15 miles long, depending on where you connect. We estimate 15 to get six MGD of water all the way from their large pipe to your large pipe. So that's pretty expensive with the pumping involved. And that's also average day. Okay? So here's the, the projection of water demand in million gallons per day versus year for your system. Okay? The yellow-orange is the average day, which is for the source. The blue is the maximum day, hence what your plant has to do. So the significance of that, your plant is rated two MGD, hence in red here. 2023, your plant will be at capacity with the current water demand projection, hence it's time to move on, to start doing something for plant capacity. Totally separate from that emerging contaminant stuff, it's time to get more capacity, which we understand that county said basically the same thing, too. So around 2023, you'd need more capacity, you could take the plant to four MGD would be a logical addition to two MGD, add the same amount of shelters again to get four MGD, or you could do two sets of it and get six MGD. Now, what we often do is bid alternate, so you meet your basic need of four MGD, but have an alternate, so if prices handle really good, you get the economy to scale and go to six MGD. But it's your choice after bids come in. That's just one way to do it. You can see how long it will last with the demand projections, four MGD gets you to 2035, six MGD gets you to 24, in which case you'd have to add more capacity, such as Jordan Lake partnership. Okay, so we listed all the options in your report and discussed them. Basically, expanding the plant to four MGD is by far the cheapest option in your capacity options, comparing all the options, at 20 million, and it can be done the fastest. We don't have to get a bunch of easements, we don't have to cross 14 creeks, we don't have to get some major permitting, so that can definitely meet your need of getting more capacity online by 2023, whether you expand to four or six MGDs. Then we showed the Western Intake Partnership, Phase One and Two from that report. They initially had you at two MGD average day, three MGD max, and then nine MGD later. That would certainly meet your needs, but they're just not ready to go, as you've probably heard, yet. They should be ready to go by the time your expansion is at capacity, but they're not ready to go right now. Similarly, constructing a new water plant, or the Sanford interconnect with all that permitting and regional partnership, we estimate all of those would not be able, not be done by 2023 without some heroic measures, with hopeful permitting, probably overly optimistic permitting, to be honest with you. But also, they cost a lot. We estimated a new water plant for you, though we'd love to do it, obviously, but a new water plant for you would cost much more than expansion. Makes sense, you have existing infrastructure, we can put stainless steel plate cadders in your existing sand basins instead of building new ones. So a new water plant costs more and would take a while, but as a mere note, it would last longer. But it doesn't get rid of the emerging contaminant issue, as you also noted, which is a great point. And we point that out also in the report. Sanford interconnect similarly doesn't resolve the emerging contaminant issue, and it costs quite a bit. We did. And at our own independent estimate of just the pump station and pipeline, 15-mile pipeline, and got 38 million. So that includes no treatment costs there, that's just pump station and pipeline. Okay, so how might you meet your long-term needs, as shown by this graph here? This is water supply and demand in million gallons per day versus the year. So looking at the blue, that was the projection of what you need in maximum day demand, and we showed you how in 2023 you need to do something, so we show expanding to four MGD with the orange here. So expand to four MGD, it gets you out to around 2034, then you join the partnership, and it has two increments, and this is your least cost alternative. Of all the alternatives that we looked at, this is the least cost alternative. And we show the costs in gray, sort of a light gray there, each step of the cost, 20 million for the four MGD, and then the intake partnerships adding on to that. In the end, you know, it sounds a lot today, but 2045, it's a total of 78 million, and the other options were quite a bit more expensive. So there you go, alternative one A, 77 million, that's the least cost option, and then the other options, like building a new plant, get over 80 million. Just showing all the alternatives coming together.
And that one A, the 13 was going maximum day? Or the.
Alternative one A, 13 MGD is the total of going to four MGD with a water plant, and then eventually getting nine MGD from the Jordan Lake partnership. Nine plus four.
Right, so that's max day.
Max day, that's max day rate.
So that's the rating of plant.
Yes.
Not the amount of water you're gonna push through the system on average day.
Correct, average day would be divided by about 1.5.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, get spirited, too. All right? So, and we wanted to make sure we had in here somewhere, as y'all have alluded to this multiple times, what about the quality of these different supplies? You know? Do they have advanced treatment? Right now, nobody has advanced treatment, so we wanted to make sure we got quality in there and cost. So this is subjective, but it allows you to at least think about the various factors besides just cost that are involved. For example, we show in light blue the most favorable and dark blue the least favorable. Cost, the option I just discussed, is the least cost option, so we showed it with the lightest color. And then if you go to quantity, it had 13 million gallons a day quantity. This one has nine plus six, 15 MGD, so it has the lightest color. These others just have 10 MGD, so they're darker. So it allows you to kind of compare, try to make it more apples to apples, because there are many factors where these other things are falling short. Talk about water quality, okay? Water quality, it would be nice to have two supplies, one on the Hall and one in Jordan Lake. So if there's a spill in the Hall, you use your Jordan Lake supply, especially if you're at the upper reach of Jordan Lake, like where the Perry Apex intake is, it's very different quality. So that's why we gave those two options, the lighter blues. The Sanford option, they're downstream of you, so if there's a contaminant in the Hall, it's gonna be downstream also. So we left it dark blue, and as a mere note, a new water plant on the Hall doesn't cause any water quality issues. Permitting, as I noted before, you have a water plant site, that's gonna be by far the best for permitting, just to expand on your existing site. Sustainability for future supply, having Jordan Lake and the Hall River is the most sustainable. Transmission, we can't really say a lot of differences at this time, that's more inside your system is what we're talking about there. The transmission cost of getting from Sanford up to you is already factored in by cost, so we didn't want to, you know, double count anything. Operations and staffing, having a regional plant would help there. Autonomy was brought up earlier, good, very good point. You don't have any control when you're buying water from somebody, you have limited control when you're in a partnership, you have the most control when it's your plant. Reliability and redundancy, we gave the best rating to the combination of Jordan Lake with your existing Hall River supply, because similar with water quality, that gives you more reliability redundancy. And that certainly can be tweaked as you think of other things you want to take into account there, but we, that allows us all to realize and bring to light, there's more than just cost here. Good. Okay, so in summary, in the short term, the town needs to expand your water supply and treatment capacity to at least four MGD by 2023. Expanding the existing plant is the best option in terms of both timeframe, getting it done in time, and in cost, it was the least cost alternative. Expansion takes about three to four years, so initiating that near term is recommended. Expanding to six MGD gives you more economy of scale, so you may want to do the bid alternate approach, that's an option. Preliminary design is recommended for moving ahead with that, that can be in parallel or following the selection of your advanced treatment. Jordan Lake regional supply is cost effective, that was the second lowest cost option, and it provides reliability, redundancy, having two supplies helps with water quality. It does require regional partnership, but so with any of the other options beyond doing your own plan, it's not possible before 2023, so that's just not an option. The interconnect at Sanford has some drawbacks, as were mentioned here by others. The option is a higher cost when compared to expanding your existing plant. The town has less control, especially over cost going forward, you know, if they want to increase the rates, you're not involved in that decision. Water quality, what technologies do you have? You know, that you're buying the water, it's not your choice. Interlocal agreement can help you define some of that, but it's also likely to include some recovery for their treatment, you know, their costs. Sanford water is sourced from Cape Fear River, which is downstream of you, so similar issues. Expanding the wastewater transfer to Sanford beyond two MGD can be permitted through the interbex and transfer process, which is the one advantage of the Sanford water supply. Okay? The town will need to evaluate your water distribution system to know what's required inside of your system, all these options are just bringing the water to your system, you know, so a large pipe coming to your system, you'll still have multiple pipes and pumps within your system. Perform a rate impact study once the final option is selected, and all your costs are known, including, you know, the dollar per thousand gallon if you're buying the water. It's very important to know, not only today, but going forward, because that has the impacts on rates. Okay, so the basic project steps, we've completed the water supply and treatment study, we're now about to initiate a pilot study and pursuing funding, and if you want to keep looking at RO, concentrate evaluation, and then once those are done, you then decide to move into design and permitting and bidding and construction to meet your needs, both capacity and water quality. Any questions?
I have just one comment. I know we're talking all about the contaminants and all, but what is it gonna do with all these old water lines that we have in town right now that are two inch and maybe getting a half inch of water to flow through? I know that doesn't have anything to do, but that's the problem that we have now, that some people can't even use the water because it's discolored or smells and all like that.
Kind of one of the points that they made is that that is additional work we need to do with the town. We've got a water asset management project that we need to get going, and we're working on getting that up and going here soon. That, we know we do some evaluations of that, continue to look at our distribution system, and we're, based on our, that we need to make plans to upgrade, we want to add developments coming along, but we're making decisions to have them upgraded, it's appropriate to be said, but those are still pending.
Yeah, and if we, either way we go, it's gonna cost great, and I'm sure to go up, and when people see rates go up, they expect their water quality to be better. That's just a point, I just want to make sure we don't overlook that, you know, our water lines in the ground.
That's a good point, that's the distribution side, great point.
You know, it's a separate issue, but multiple towns in the area are, Durham is a good example, Durham's going through, I don't know how long, decade-long process of getting all the two-inch galvanized pipe out of their system and replacing it with, you know, six-inch PVC pipe or something that's more modern, and that would address some of the issues you're talking about, when you neck down to a real small pipe, you burn off all the pressure. So when people have low pressure and sometimes quality issues because the pipe's not the right material and too small.
Can I put staff on the up seat here and ask Elizabeth and Adam if all of this makes sense? Is there any jurisdiction that you have worked with that has provided notices to the water customers with regard to these emerging contaminants?
Well, yes. The Wilmington area went through probably worse public press than y'all had that to deal with, but it was some time ago, when they first came out with, oh, there's GenX in water. So they got, they learned that they need to put information on the internet right as soon as they get it, or they're going to be criticized for not making that information available in a prompt manner.
Is GenX a proven carcinogen as opposed to ours, which are unproven carcinogens?
GenX is in the same category of a possible carcinogen.
Okay.
They just, they similarly had unfair press coverage.
I would say, I don't know, I don't know with any certainty that they mailed anything out, they put it all on their website. I'm very confident that, well, Brunswick County and Wilmington, which are the main providers affected by GenX, put all their data, all the reports from engineers, you can find some reports by Bill and I up there, and all the data that was provided by the state, it all been made available on the website, which was a big effort, but that's my understanding of how they made it possible.
Are there questions for Reed and Bill?
I think I do have additional questions, but I think I need some more time to process to make them seem valid.
Sure.
You know, I've got lots of notes, that's not reading scribbling, and when I read them now, I'm thinking, well, maybe I've already got that answer, so. I think I've got contact information, or I can just send them to Ryan.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Exactly.
I'll do that.
And I guess it's press is probably, I should say, not nice, Wilmington has not nice press coverage as opposed to unfair. Is that a better word?
I'd say we were unfair, too. Did we get any resolution on the pilot testing?
Okay, so we will prepare a scope for the town staff to review, work with them on honing that in on everything they need, they want to see in this first step.
Do we need a motion here?
I think we're okay, I think we're okay to bring it back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what leaves us with is to take a look at the draft of information in respect to mailing a notification to our water customers, and those are at your desk. As wordsmithed this a couple of times. To try to remind. As wordsmithed this a couple of times, to try to remind customers that the town's drinking water meets or exceeds every state requirement, and how unregulated chemicals are indeed unregulated. The chemical, the health effects are unknown. But we also were saying so that customers can have the best information about this situation. Town Control wants its customers to know that these chemicals have been found in differing amounts in the Hall River where we intake raw water and in the treated water, and Adam has already slipped out of it, which is distributed in our water system. As stated above, the health effects are unknown. What I think this commands us to do is to, is to begin to put things on the website under a special category that would provide the kind of information that if somebody is interested, which the last paragraph says, if you're interested, we'll be posting further information, studies, and research as a list of resources. And I think that we need to get on that task, but certainly, at the last meeting, the board said it was their directive to inform water customers with some sort of mailing. Is there any further wordsmithing or thoughts that people would like to make about the proposed draft?
I have a question. It's paragraph one, two, three. This fifth paragraph? Seems to me it's already saying what's already been said, but I just wonder if that's, if I've just missed anything?
I can't, yeah, I think summary is good.
So, I get maybe to say in summary.
Okay.
Because when I read that, I was going to give like, oh, this.
I actually think that it should be where it indicates that customers are reminded. I think that actually should be the first sentence, not first sentence, sorry, first paragraph, and then go into what we're actually stating, so that they can, at first, first paragraph, see that we, that the town of Pittsburgh is meeting or exceeding every state requirement. Then, I think we should say that the town of Pittsburgh wants its customers to know that recent analysis by so-and-so of our drinking water shows the presence of this that and all, or put an asterisk down there to indicate where these analysis come from.
I understand, I understand. I actually don't agree with that, I'm sorry. Because I feel like the purpose of the latter needs to be stated right up against. I guess I come from an journalism background, and you didn't like to get right to it, but to me, we don't want to appear to be trying to soften it. I mean, I think they need to be closely connected, but I think in the beginning, it needs to just be, that's just my opinion, needs to just start off with what the letter is about. And the second paragraph to me is showing no calls for alarm here, that this is, you know, we do this. I mean, the journalism rules are who, what, where, and when, and that should be pretty much in the beginning there.
I just want people to know basically that, because sometimes you get to a part where things that we meet or see, that's already said, but, you know, either way.
Well, you know, Pamela, I think you make a good point, because all the data we've heard, it's all been presented, and everyone always qualifies it as, this is not regulated, and we don't know what's effects we suspected as far as. So, I think it's good to remind everybody that by all standard, all legal standards, we're doing a great job. However, we are going the extra length because this data and information has been brought to our attention, we're concerned. We don't know what the problem is, but we're concerned enough to try to solve it.
I think a similar, it's funny because I've never seen Owassa reported on as far as PSS. On Owassa's website, they made an announcement, and the very first paragraph says exactly that Owassa maintains full compliance, often surpasses. And then, they get into what's actually being done, which I think is the most useful part if you're going to send notice, that's something that we're not any violation for. I think the most useful part is assuring people that we're not in violation.
However, the first thing you read is testing for, it's right there in the headline, so they do get right to the point with the letter, the purpose of the letter.
Granted, but my only point is is if the argument is, do you put that, do you put the compliance statement in the first paragraph, the second paragraph? Owassa.
I think there's a way to have it all the same paragraph. You could say, while Town of Pittsburgh's drinking water meets or exceeds state requirements, then you could say, then you can also incorporate the same sentence. We want our customers to know that these things have been detected in our drinking water. I mean, to me, it's not a one or the other, but I think that you need to have both pieces of information right up there, maybe in the same paragraph, and I think there's a way of doing that without trying to appear like we're trying to soften it before we even tell you what the problem is. Because what we want here is honesty and concern, but also we have bragging rights. I mean, we have great, we have award-winning waters. We're doing everything we can, and I think it's important that to mention, too, that this is coming from upstream and not anything that we've done.
Yeah. And on that, Commissioner Foley, I had been thinking about the third paragraph, adding a final clause after the word runoff. I guess it'd be a column, beyond town control.
Maybe there should even be a sentence in there about, you know, writing to, you know, this is a state problem, this is a regulatory problem.
Well, that may be our next step.
Yeah, that's maybe not in this letter, but on our website, I don't know.
State.
It's a little crazy that all these towns in North Carolina are having to do with this problem, when it's really a regulation problem.
Yes.
I think on our website, we could put who, to answer your interest in knowing who the recent analysis was done by, we can perhaps put that on the website with the Dr. Nappi and the other experts at the universities that we've dealt with. So, the notice would read then, while the town's drinking water meets or exceeds every state requirement, the town of Pittsburgh wants its water customers to know that recent analysis of our drinking water shows the presence of certain unregulated chemicals. These unregulated chemicals are called one, four dioxin, bromides, PFOS, and PFOM. And then, we go into the.
Well, that, that sentence of the second paragraph, is that the state of North Carolina doesn't have the knowledge, that way?
Yes, yeah. And after that, with third estate, and. Town is planning near-term and long-term actions to remove these unregulated chemicals. Do we want to be any more specific than that? I'm not sure that we can.
I might, I think, I was going to say the paragraph four before we get too far down. To me, saying the health effects of these unregulated chemicals are unknown, they are being seriously studied. I think you take out that sentence because to me, it's saying these studies are being conducted nationwide. I mean, that to me is a bit serious, you don't have to say.
Oh, okay. So, take out the.
They are being seriously studied.
Oh, take out that they're being seriously studied. What about keeping, keeping the, being nationwide?
Yes, the studies are, such studies are being conducted nationwide.
Okay. And then, in summary, on the left here, on the next slide.
Is there anyone else who would like to see a clause after agriculture runoff beyond our control, beyond town control? It probably goes without saying for most people, we think about these things, and a lot of people don't think about the fact that we don't have any control over industrial discharge in Guilford County and Alamance County.
I like the word out of our control, it kind of implies that might cause concern, that we are, we do have some control because we're doing something about it. We don't want to show passive, or we want to show we're taking action. We are, we don't have to dream this since the public, we're concerned about it, and we're doing something about it, and I want that to be reassuring to people to see us taking action and not saying, oh, we're helping. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Well, what about saying beyond, instead of beyond town control, beyond town jurisdiction?
Yes.
That would, that would mean that we weren't at fault, but, but is that, okay. All right. And then, is there anybody, let's work with Adam and Brian and I don't know who else on staff that might want to help put things on the website?
Let me be devil's advocate, do we know for a fact that our jurisdiction is not contributing to any of these?
Well, is there any jurisdiction that the town has?
We would need to know where our sewage sludge solids are being applied or disposed.
I think insufficient supply.
I think that's the primary source, but yeah, upstream covers it. I mean, we're not drinking, we're downstream.
Results of upstream discharges and agricultural runoff. So, we're taking out beyond jurisdiction. What about, what about organizations that get group billing? In other words, apartment building? Not that we have that many of them, but.
Schools.
Schools.
Office complexes.
Office complexes. The people who have a group to our bill, do we want to, how do we want to deal with that? The website, thank you. Do we want something on the chat list?
No. I think you have, especially here.
That seems to give them a lot.
Well, it certainly does, you know.
I have a sister who lives in North Chatham, and she says that, you know, one of the neighborhood things, she was saying that a lot of people are, don't even limit the city limits, they drink county water, are thinking it applies to them as well. So, I don't know what we can do about that, though, but. It's interesting that a lot of people in the county, like in Pittsburgh, they think that it infects their water.
Well, I guess we found out during all of the statutes and other controversial things at the county level that, that a lot of people don't understand jurisdictions, because I've certainly got a lot of, a lot of phone calls about things that we have nothing to do with.
Back to your comment there about asking staff for input on what items are priorities for collection in a website specific to this concern. We might offer that timeline, which I think adds links and dates to certain documents and push the documents or the CDM spent engineering report, the copy report, the operator assembly report of data. But there were some earlier dates also.
Maybe some links to parts of the presentation tonight that apply, that are related to this.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, I just want to, I've read over this numerous times also, but is it possibility of, we have sit, sit here and read over CD Smiths, how they used the word emerging contaminants and use that instead of unregulated chemicals. I just, I just read unregulated chemicals in here six times, and we've got two, three, six paragraphs, maybe more than that.
Do you think that's fair?
Let me just mix it up.
Well, I mean, in the first paragraph, you got unregulated chemicals in this, and it says the next sentence is these unregulated chemicals. I just think a shorter version is better, because if people get a too long version, they're going to look at it and throw it in the trash.
Maybe the second time you mention it, these emerging contaminants, and that helps define what's going on.
They're on out. I prefer to use the word comp than a chemical, because chemicals in here, chemicals are not necessarily a judgmental word, but these compounds are fluorinated compounds, and that's what makes them a concern, I think.
Well, how about using alternatively, emerging contaminants and compounds as we go through, so it's not.
It's possible.
Yeah, so it, yeah. I always, I frankly thought emerging contaminant sounded worse than unregulated chemicals.
We're hearing it, but if you're.
Yeah, engineers. I mean, the unregulated part comes from the fact that, you know, they're not regulated.
Yeah.
As such, we kind of have difficulty in treating them because we don't have standards for treating.
Yeah.
I would leave it unregulated, yeah, for sure.
And chemicals, whether it's compounds or.
Whether chemicals, yeah.
If people understand what.
It's a good point.
I think, okay, like instead of using claims or whatever, you know, like you could, maybe even emerging contaminants, confusing, like you could take these contaminants.
Okay, or these compounds.
They will alternate that out of the fifth.
Yeah. All right. Well, there being no new business, I think very quickly we can say board directives. Brian reported at the last meeting about the, besides, and talked about it again tonight, which I think is just an absolutely wonderful goal that we have reached. I did wonder about notifications to homeowners associations who might hire companies to come and put, put down stuff.
Well, I was only speaking on behalf of town staff, I can't.
Right, right, yeah. Well, and simply to say that we were concerned about the roundup, glycos, glycos, I was going to say, chemical, and we just wanted homeowners associations to know what we were doing, and they would certainly be free to. The reason this even came up was because I was on one of my walks today, and the folks out at Potterstone have their garden entered professionally done, and the fellow was really interested in the idea that, that we were looking at alternatives, and he said he'd really like to communicate with John Furtis and to find out what we were using in the town, which I thought was just a little bit absurd. So, we might think about doing something like that to, I don't think we have more of them, just maybe a handful of homeowners associations. And that's the only thing I have to report on our board directives, and so that leaves us with Commissioner Concern, Jay Farrell.
The only thing I have, I don't know if Jeff can do anything about that, is the house on Main Street has been burnt, abandoned, and all. The grass hasn't been mowed all year long, and it's about waist-high.
You're one of the new copies.
Yeah. I know a gentleman lives, I have an office at the Overtise Clinic, I believe, but I've had several people question me about that.
You know, the money's hands up for sale, and the realtor reached out to me a month or so back, and I reached out to the realtor.
All right, thank you.
For sale again? Well, it never really went up for sale at the time, but I was told that it was going up for sale. Maybe it was not, but I'll reach out to that person, that may not help. We'll, we'll be long.
Yeah, thank you. That's all.
I can't see yours.
Well, when I was on vacation, his grass grew. Well, when I was on vacation, his grass grew. We had a lot of rain. Beth?
Coming back into town last night on eight seven, approaching the circle, and had I not known that circle was there, who knows what could have happened? I mean, that thing is dark as can be. I think we need to, or at least some delineators, some reflectors to say, the road's about to turn, and there's a big old pile of concrete coming your way.
Are you talking about at the college?
Yeah, I was coming at eight seven, it must have been about nine thirty, ten o'clock.
You're circling out with?
It's dark as can be. Yeah. So, I don't know if you can do something, or if.
Yeah, thanks. Well, we'd like to see it at eight. Light got pretty low, and I knew you'd be pleased if you weren't in Greece, but.
I heard all of it.
But the bookstore folks, we're just thrilled today when I talked to them about it, and no longer will they have customers coming in and out of the bookstore. Pamela? John?
Okay.
Entertaining motion.
Move.
Sure.
Sorry.
Moved by Martha Pio, seconded by Jay Farrell, that's a big hand.